Okay, good morning, everybody. Nine o'clock. Today is Wednesday, February the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. Welcome to the Cook County Work Session Agenda. For Charter of Business, is there any public comment? And then here online, is there anyone for public comment? Raise your hand. Hearing then, we will move forward with discussion items. Number one, we have the Honorable Bruce Scanlon here from South Lake Irrigation District. Report on the Western Ridge Mussels and the ESA listing.
Yeah, I provided you a short overview of where we're at. If we, that gets you up to speed to some degree. And I'm happy to get into whatever details that you want to. I am definitely no muscle expert. Maybe by the end of this, I will be, but the hope is that I won't. But the request before you is to to see if the the commission would be willing to partner with three Northern Irrigation Districts and potentially the City of Primeville as we begin preparations for the likelihood of a ESA listing of the Western Ridge Mussel that is found throughout the Crooked River. The petition to list that species was provided in two thousand and twenty. And then the services followed up a year later and done their due diligence and they're finding that there is reason to believe that 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 species is likely to be listed as endangered or threatened, at least. So as you all are fairly well aware of, the need to continue to be ahead of those places where we might see impacts. Would we have that conservation plan? There is a process to be able to add ESA species to that plan. And so the districts that are impacted by this potential species have a process to do that. The City of Primeville. But there may not be as easy of a process or a way for other portions of the county to be able to get good information and have data about what this, what the impacts of this listing might be. And and so I'll go ahead and just leave it there and say, what are your issues, concerns, thoughts? What gaps of understanding or knowledge do you want to pick at for now?
The only question I would, well, should there be more questions? But which agency is pursuing this?
Is the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service? That's, oh. I just, the Xersey Society has posted the we stress the list or whatever it's called. To U.S., it's a species that is under the purview of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
Yeah, I'm just saying, which, where in Washington, D.C. would the problem come from? It's more what I was looking for. And so you're saying, U.S. Fish and Wildlife?
U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, yes.
Yeah, I'm totally comfortable writing the letter.
So this is, I guess my question is, you want, so you want us obviously to do a letter support for this grant? And then are we, are you asking us to oblige for forty-eight hundred dollars? Or forty-eight hundred dollars is of all the partners? Or kind of explain your ask, I guess is what I need to know.
Thank you. Yeah, I did do a very good job of that. So, so far, Central Oregon Irrigation District, North Unit Irrigation District, and the Ochikö Irrigation District Boards have all approved full partnership in the total amount of, what was it?
Twenty-four, twenty-four thousand is the total.
And so I'm coming to you guys as a potential partner in whatever measure you decide. And then we've taken this to the city council. And I feel pretty strongly for the city council to be interested in participating in this as well. They do have a direct relationship to the HCP and the and their impact on the Crooked River are part of that, too.
So our ask of that twenty-four thousand would be forty-eight hundred, basically? That's what you're asking?
Full share.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, I have, so on budgetary, where does that come out of our budgetary? What line item, I guess, do we need to worry about? Or how, where's Christina on here? Christina, up here on the board. How do we come out? Is there a legislative or where does that come out of our budget?
We would have to have a discussion. Typically, it'd be something in non-departmental, similar to the Community Support Fund. Because we don't have that budgeted this year. We'd need to look at probably using contingency. But it would depend upon the timing of that payment. If we could put it in next budget in fiscal year twenty-six, or if they needed it sooner than that.
So when would you need the money?
ASA.
ASAP.
We essentially have already turned this loose to do the work. There is a deadline for the application in March.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Christina, there's your answer. So do we, how are we budgetarily, do we have a place for it?
At this point, to move that quickly, it'd probably need to come out of community support.
Do we have that?
We do, but that will be very close to the limit of what we had budgeted out of that line item in the budget.
And I just want to announce or whatever that I'm a member of the Irrigation District. If I feel like I'm giving dollars, that I need to make sure that people understand that I'm part of the district as a what am I, a customer or a patron of the
Value?
A valued patron of the district. So I think it's important, if we're going to give dollars, that I share that that's that I'm part of the, part of the organization. Very, very low level, let's be very clear. And I'll, I remember, I remember done this.
Yeah, and I have to recuse myself because I'm on the Board of Directors, which Irrigation District. But I'm fully supportive of this. The county and the city, you know, have done mutual programs together in Crooked River legislation and the HCP. You know, they don't just represent the patrons that are below the report. They represent, and this will represent everyone in the county as the other, you know, things that's happened will be affected from this listing. So that's my two cents. Tim, do you have something?
I just wonder if it's opportune to ask some clarifying questions. One about, is it, are we looking at the Crooked River just below Bowman Dam? Or are we looking at Crooked River clear up to the, to the Ochikos?
So, O-I-D in North Unit, after the petition to list, they contracted with Nava Environmental, who is whose proposal you have before him. And they did testing throughout the system of the Crooked River, also on the dischutes side of things. And there is strong indicators of, it's a DNA testing stuff. And so there's, there's definitely populations above Bowman Dam. When the the land trust on the Ochiko Preserve was doing their in-water work this year, they moved Western Ridge Muscles that they, because ODFW is now requiring you, if you're doing the water work, to do a survey for mussels and then move them if they're present. So they, they are in this stretch below. And there's documented groups down by Smith Rock and throughout, throughout the Crooked River.
So then I wonder also, is there an effort to contact like People's Irrigation, Low Line, Lone Pine, all the other companies and/or diverters of, because might the listing affect all irrigation?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't done that, no. I don't think it's a bad idea, though. I think that we shouldn't keep it a secret.
And we did a lot of that with the HCP, and there wasn't any participation from the outlined districts, even though they received the benefits of the work that everyone's doing. Yeah. Thanks.
Well, I don't have, and I am not, I am way up above and playing. I come out of an aquifer, so I am definitely not conflicted. I have no problem at all with this. So you are, is it better that I make the motion?
Well, I guess that's a question for John, then maybe Will. Neither one of you guys are technically our attorneys anymore, but maybe, maybe John is a little.
I still count it out.
I never even thought about Eric isn't here, is he?
Is that enough to advise that I'm a customer? And then can I vote, or am I putting myself in jeopardy by voting?
Because it kind of, it's only me that's not conflicted, I guess.
We need a quorum to make a vote. So a couple issues here. So what are we trying to approve right now? Is it forty-eight hundred or the letter or?
I think the letter and the forty-eight hundred is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, that we participate, we partner in here on this petition about the Western Ridge Mussel.
So I think there's kind of two different things. The first with the letter, if we're just going to write the letter, we can come back and have a motion before we approve it. Like at the next meeting, we can put it together and have it at the next meeting and have it be part of that and give a motion there. We need the money now, then I would recommend motion, recommend a motion. Seth, so you're, I guess you're addressing a potential conflict of interest. You're not on the record. Probably okay. Correct. And we really don't need a letter, per se. It's really just your active participation in the application itself.
Just care for the money.
And so really, yeah. But you would be getting in on the ground floor of all of that work from Section one oh six ESA processes from here on out.
Well, I feel this affects everybody at Cook County, so I make a motion to do I, how do I want to say this, John, in the best way? I make a motion to participate in the grant application to to list the Western Ridge, well, I don't, I'm not exactly sure how I want to do.
Pause real quick. So we don't need a motion to participate in applying for a grant? And so it's a separate thing, then, so what is the money going to be used for? Forty-eight hundred dollars, what does that go for?
There's a partnership.
That is the fee for the scope of work to complete the grant application. And then you then have the grant to be able to move forward with additional work.
So at that dollar value, that doesn't require full board approval. It could just be a will sign off of forty-eight hundred dollars. And so it's up to us if we want to, I guess.
So we authorize Will to sign off on the forty-eight hundred dollars, or we don't need to do that? Or how do you want to handle that, I guess?
I mean, I think one option would be
To do it, right.
Yeah, I mean, you could direct me to have additional conversations with Bruce to ensure this is consistent with how the board has used the community fund in the past and then make sure we have the funding available and give me the discretion to make the decision on whether to spend
So moved. I like that motion. So moved.
Second. Votes have been made, the second panel of the disposition of the request. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're still overused, I think.
Oh, basically, hermeneck aye.
Seth aye.
Brian's.
Abstain, you're right, abstain, abstain, abstention. Thank you, Bruce.
Yeah, you, appreciated, everybody.
Can you send me that stuff?
The, what I said.
Okay, next item update on N R A C vacancy application process. Tim?
Yeah, so just sort of a heads up. So we, the N RAC currently has one open position that's been in sort of a long-term advertising period. The advertising period for this one ends on Friday. We will be, as soon as I hear from a couple of more committee members to ensure we have a quorum, we will be holding a special Zoom meeting on Monday to review those applications to make a recommendation to you guys at your Wednesday commission meeting. So tentatively, that meeting is scheduled for Monday at noon. It'll be a Zoom-only meeting, but still, we don't, I want to make sure we have a quorum before we send out all the paperwork. So anyway, that'll be coming up and then you'll see it next Wednesday in your and just kind of a remembering of, you know, the committee is kind of a unique committee in its membership. We try to strive for sort of a variety of representation of users of the public lands. So we have grazers, we have folks involved in the logging industry, timber industry, recreationists. And we have always tried to sort of get folks that have environmental concerns. We also, so that's kind of a, not inclusive, but an example of sort of the breadth of who we chase. We also look for geographical representation. And so we want to make sure folks across the county, from the upper country to post wherever that we sort of cover a breadth of where everybody's coming from. So and probably the third criteria is folks that are involved in other things within the community. We have Hunters Association, we have Catman's Association, we have Small Woodlands Association. So people that sort of cut across to a variety of people, organizations, so that they become the eyes and ears of a much broader group of folks when we have our discussion. So that's some of the sort of selection criteria that they'll be looking at as they review those applicants and the recommendation to come to you on next Wednesday.
And I want to reinforce how important this committee is because I know you guys are aware of OFRC, which is the Ochiko. You got to help me with this, Ochiko Forest Collaborative. What does the R stand for?
Re. The Oregon, the Ochiko Forest Resources Collaborative.
Collaborative. Anyway, with the federal funding cut at that as it is, we are now pausing the full group and having an executive meeting in March. And we're basically rethinking our meeting because the forestry is conflicted on whether they can come report to us and all of that. So with that, definitely with that county or basically us kind of in a limbo, it becomes very important that this committee exist and get the, get the input that Tim is organizing because we may have a real vacancy on that forestry side just because of everything that's going on that's coming down from the White House. So I want to re.
Just a little history, I know you guys probably all know it, but the Ochiko Forest Collaborative was established at about twenty-twelve. Then Commissioner Baldwin and Mayor Ropie interested in trying to reinvigorate logging, harvesting in the Ochikos, looking at historically the litigation that was keeping all of that activity from occurring on the Ochikos. Collaboratives was sort of the effort to bring multiple voices together and get us back in the woods. So they've been going for quite a while. The county in two thousand and seventeen created the Natural Resources Advisory Committee as a result of a group of citizens reacting to an effort to basically turn about two-thirds of the Ochiko Forest into a national recreation area. Oregon Wild was making noise about doing that. Citizens came together and said, no, and we want to have, we want the county to have a voice in our public land management. So they created a draft policy. The commission at the time, County Court, adopted that policy and then created this committee to serve as your advisors for things happening on public land. So that committee's been in existence since eighteen. And so that's kind of, again, to solidify what Suzie says, that they're there to sort of be additional eyes and ears.
Over a broader compass, because you have the BLM, we have a more broader compass of the entire public land. Whereas
The collaborative just focuses.
Trying to get, get projects done in the Ochiko Forest with, without the funding we're going to have probably in the.
So they're project oriented, where we're sort of policy oriented.
So we're kind of reconfiguring. We've also had a little bit of a, oh, what do I want to say? A discussion that got a little heated between the industry and environmentalists. So we're stepping back a little bit also on that issue.
I've always, never really cared for the collaborative. I know you've worked very hard, Suzie, and I'm not trying to take away from what you've done. But I think the whole system is flawed because it doesn't stop environmentalists from stopping projects even after they have voted in favor of those projects. And I think it's just a revolving door. But I think it's, I think it's honorable that you have spent so much time and you've done better than anyone I've ever seen in a collaborative. So I'm not bagging on Suzie's activities as part of it. I think the entire system of a collaborative is very flawed and usually is not super effective.
But we are definitely in a restructuring, but I just, again, want to to say, N RAC is very, very important to us as county leaders because of that.
Hundred percent.
And OFRC may become not basically getting the, I guess, the information that I need just because of.
Well, I think y'all know there's lots of turmoil at the moment with management of our public lands and the agencies, you know, staffing and lots of things. So probably more than ever, it's going to be important to sort of try to be as close to the, what's happening within those organizations so that the county can respond in a variety of ways.
Yes. Yes, and such a large portion of our county is federal. So very much, so I mean, I'm giving you a gold star on your paper today. Okay, there we go. All right.
Hey, next item update on the Extension Advisory Board appointments. Rebecca.
Yeah. Rebecca, do you want to come up maybe over here? There's, Eric's not here, I guess, is he sick?
We had Paul, who's going to be here as soon as he's on.
Oh, okay. I, like I say, I didn't even notice he was gone, too. Not very nice, am I?
Good morning. I'm going to just reciprocate the beginning of what Tim had said. The Ag Extension Advisory Board had three positions that were listed and posted for a period of time. And we had a couple applicants that had applied and we sent those applications to the advisory board. And so we are going to, I was working with Sarah to do a public notice and we're going to hold a special meeting on Monday and review those applications. And then I'll meet with you guys at the commission meeting next week and then give you the advice that they had given and we'll be able to execute after that. Thank you on Monday.
Thanks, thank you. Perfect, thank you. Number four, Cook County Ambulance Service. Katie?
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, I think I'll start on page three, there's a record of changes in the history of the document outlined. This was originally developed in two thousand and eight. And I am not aware of the history. I know Jeremiah is online, he might be able to speak a little bit better to the history of the plan. Where I have stepped into it is hearing from Oregon Health Authority that the plan needed updated. And so in partnership with Cook County Fire and Rescue, they have filled us in on requirements. So we've reviewed all of the OARs and for the rules and statutes that are related to this plan. Amber Blanchard, one of our former county employees, did a fantastic job of capturing the requirements and making them really clear that they're being addressed through this plan. And so we are requesting adoption. There was not, there weren't any real functional changes to the plan, but it did reconfirm that we have, you know, our partners are re-engaged in providing coverage on some of our bordering areas with issues. So some of that work was done as part of this process. But functionally, it's very similar to the original plan, but it's much, it's updated in a way that is very clear that we're abiding by. Oh. There is a section where it outlines an advisory council for this plan. And so that will be something that we need to I'm not sure if it's to redevelop. If it existed historically, I'm not sure, but it is a requirement of this plan to stand up, stand up a an advisory council. And there it is outlined in this, you know, I do have to like search to refer to the page that that is outlined on. Page twenty-one outlines the structure of the advisory committee. So in addition to adopting this plan, I would hope for a green light as well to bring these folks to you for appointments so that we can start the advisory council.
Not anyone, right?
No. Yeah. No, I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm totally fine. Thank you for all the work that you've done. This is an important part, so I appreciate it.
We had a lot of partner engagement to do the bulk of the work.
I'm sure you did, I'm sure you had to, but thank you very, very much. So, so what we need to do then is to put this on the consent agenda. Is this a time sensitive, or how do we need to?
I think consent would be certainly fine unless.
There's any other questions?
I feel that there's a need for discussion, but.
Are we tasked with starting this advisory committee?
Um, like, are, are you all tasked?
No, I, I say we as part of our.
Wants to do.
Yeah, Brian said that he's got a good job he wants, yeah.
He's excited, don't worry.
Yes, it is in statute that we need to have that. This plan has an advisory council. There's, it's not much more prescriptive than that. And so in speaking with our partners, you know, we don't think that there's a need for, you know, there's a process for grievances and things. And so we could convene as necessary to address those. Otherwise, it could potentially be an annual convening and review of the plan, but we don't have the, the requirements aren't overly detailed for what that advisory council looks like or how it functions. So we would have the ability to determine that.
Who's the advisory council advising?
They have oversight of the plan.
Are they, are they advising the fire district and the county, or is it, is it just?
So right now it is the, you know, we have one provider in the county, so that makes it very simple, unless we get an application from, you know, a franchise to come in and provide services to the county, then that would change it a little bit. And the, so the committee would be the ones to review any applications for new providers to come in to the county. So right now, it's very. We would be fielding any grievances, bringing them to you all. And then ensuring that the plan is being implemented, really.
Is, is there currently a committee right now? No, so you're gonna start the process like with Sarah advertised and, and, and run through the process.
Yeah, and it is fairly prescriptive of the, so on page twenty-one, it outlines who. We need on the advisory and then there's a community member component as well.
Members or members.
Yeah.
And so, yeah.
Well, you'd have to.
So I, so then I assume that we have to draft this document and so legal counsel. Help with that.
The, like bylaws for the group.
Yeah, the whole.
I'm not aware of any existing.
So, so that's a good question is before it goes on consent, do we need to have legal counsel look at this ambulance service contract first? I know you just walked in and this is kind of bad for you, Eric.
The service area plan?
Yeah.
Oh, we've invented.
So you've already looked at it. So it's a, okay, perfect. And that's perfect. But box checked. Good, Katie.
Yes, Katie and her colleagues have been doing this effort to review and update that. And although it's a large document, I don't know if it is necessarily. Clear just how much time and effort they put into it. So if you haven't had the opportunity to thank them for only done, this is a great chance to do so.
I did, right before you. I just wanted to make sure, Eric, you had put your, you weren't there, so see out of sight, out of line. What can I say?
So would we, so then are we gonna put together a committee? To appoint these people and have a meeting or is that something we're gonna do as a county? We're just gonna take in the group of names and then appoint or are we gonna have? A separate public meeting where we have those people and then have that conversation and then we then move forward with that. Recommendation.
I think that is totally up to how you all would like the process to look like.
What's your suggestion? Since you have lived and breathed this document, what is your expert opinion?
I think that we have. You know, the, the entities that are listed that are a little more specific. We kind of know who those people are going to be. There's not that many of us. So then the bigger lift for recruitment engagement will be our community members. So perhaps. We bring in the folks that are a little more prescribed. And then bring recommendations to you all, like that group can bring recommendations to you all for maybe.
Because some of them are already appointed, I'd be in this director.
Yes, I don't know.
That position is already.
Correct, but their role in this is not necessarily. Appointed officially that I know of. But yes, they're already very much involved in the plan. There are several of these folks that are listed were ones that we reached out to for help reviewing and editing this document.
So do we need a quick, maybe little bylaw thing before we do this, like?
I would imagine.
Okay. And then that would come from legal or would it come from you getting together and?
I can probably draft it and have.
Legal look at it and then we move forward from there.
I am not, Eric, holding on you, but I think we can adopt the plan because the standing up. You know, the plan just outlines that we need to have the advisory council and then we have a separate process for making sure that the advisory council gets stood up.
And, and then that, I mean, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't just have a discussion about the people that we were gonna point. Reason that we were gonna point them of that they're filling these roles and then appoint them and then you would have. A set. Committee that you could then have tasked with going out and increasing the size to, as long as there's a corner, move forward.
Yeah, I think we can put those parameters in the bylaws and bring those back.
So I say we put the plan on the consent agenda and then you will come, I guess you come back to us with the bylaws.
Yeah, I can do that.
And then, and then we go forth from there. Is that the proper way then, you think?
Yeah, I don't see any reason why you would hold up the approval of the plan while the bylaws are drafted.
Yeah, I think that's very good.
I do before signature and I can send this to Sarah. There's a number transposed on page ten in the ORS. It's like six to eight, it needs to be six, eight, two, but I can make that change before considering.
Yeah, the, the only question I would have is on that consent agenda, would that be appointing people to the board?
This is just it. Then she's coming back with the bylaws for the committee thing and, and that's. So I think that's the right way. I think you've done a good job, Katie, again. Thank you.
Katie's leading the motion except for plan. Well, I think, yeah.
So I think we're good, totally good.
Thank you. And thank you too. I know Jeremiah is online. They put a lot of effort into this.
Does, does Jeremiah have a comment for us or anything?
I'm just glad to be able to give them kudos.
There he is.
I do not. Thank you, Katie, for all the work you put on putting it together. But I think you guys are right on track with the intent of the document is really by state statute and rules. The oversight falls to the each county to provide ambulance service area in, you know, every square inch of Oregon, which is different than fire protection, obviously. And so this document really outlines the parameters that is really then chosen to Cook County Fire and Rescue. And Redmond and Ben Fire on the west borders of how we function within the county to provide ambulance services. So thanks, Katie.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremiah.
Thanks for all the help.
All right, next one, Grant, acceptance for e-bike addition to Cook County Library of Things collection.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm here today with James Good of a good bike and also Chris Ching and Sarah Hemantow from ODOT. Chris, do you want to give like a short explanation of what this program is?
Sure. Hopefully you can hear me. Sorry, I've been having tech problems since my computer upgraded the other day. But yeah, this program would be offering funds to purchase a few e-cargo bikes to use in the Cook County Library's library of things. So people can check them out for a month or three weeks at a time there.
Uh, Grant is in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-seven cents. About half of that would be distributed upfront for the purchase of the equipment. It covers helmets, extra batteries, supply, maintenance, the extra insurance that Gravio funded us. We are in the process, we have some sample loan agreements that we have reviewed. And we will be sending those along to legal counsel to firm of the library, the living waiver portion of it. And so people will sign those off. We have three sheds across the street from the library and one of them's empty. And so we have emptied it out in anticipation of having that as a place to store the e-bikes. There is power there, although during the winter we bring the batteries inside. It's just a really nice opportunity to give our residents a chance to explore a different mode of transportation and have a little fun this late spring and summer. There will be anti tracking device on these. And so maybe do you want to tell a little bit about what that looks like?
Yeah, I guess I don't, as far as the brand and all that, I'm not super familiar with it, but ultimately it's similar to your tag. The library will actually have the, they'll have the. Master code, if you will, to track disabled bikes, et cetera. So you can kind of see, so it's not, it's not, you know, so you can just follow people wherever they go, but it's just so you kind of have an idea as to. Where the bikes might be if, if the bike gets abandoned or isn't returned. At least there's a little bit of flexibility, a little bit of diligence on top of that, right? And so.
Do you say you could make it inoperable?
You can, you can, I believe with this product, you can just be able to buy that.
All right, so this might be a question for Chris. Is he still on there or did he leave?
No, he's still there.
This is one of my things with it. Why three weeks? Because we have three bikes. We have twenty-seven thousand people in the county. Seems to me that you are extremely limited. You know, like you go to Bender, I'm familiar with New York and Washington DC. There's a whole row of bikes. So therefore you're, you're serving a population, but here we have three bikes. It seems that giving a three-week thing is really only giving three people. I, I, I have a problem with the three weeks, I guess. I, I, I'd like to see more of a circulating, so more people. Yeah, more people would be able to go and do the Crooked River Bike Trail for the weekend and then bring it back. And then next weekend I could take my grandchildren and do the Crooked River. You know what I'm trying to say? I have a problem with the three weeks. So where did three weeks come up and do we have to stay with three weeks? I guess is my question.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. There are different types of programs, right? One version is that sort of bikes everywhere, so you can just check it out for a day to do a fun event. And then this other model is sort of looking at giving people the opportunity to try this for an extended period. So they can see, say, getting their kid to school every day over that period. So that's just the model we sort of went with because it's so limited, right? We don't have the money to do a full bike share and capacity throughout the city for that other type of system that you might see in Ben, New York and those other ones. But the three week is not set in stone. That's something of a policy decision there on what works best with the library as well.
So we could change that three week. That is, okay, so that would be at our discretion then.
That would be part of that sort of agreement that we have going, so we'd have a discussion around that. I'd have to review those exact details.
I don't, I don't think that details on the grant agreement with three weeks.
Okay, but that was when, when you first sent your first communication that Sarah sent. It was stated that it was three weeks and again, like I say, I'd like to give more people an opportunity. And I'm looking more, I understand what you're saying because hopefully after three weeks, they're looking at it and saying, hey, I want to do this. They go to James, they buy an e-bike, but I also look at the recreation part of it and how many more people can we serve? Recreational wise by allowing maybe a two or three day thing. So would that be something you would consider, I guess, on your part?
Yes, that's definitely something I consider and we've already discussed it with Sarah as well of, you know, potentially a second program as well too. As you expand out into the Crooked River area there. So, yeah, we could, it is at your discretion. Sorry, Sarah, she's on the call, but message me. It is at your discretion there. We did not put it in the grant agreement.
It sits on page one oh seven in the packet, page sixteen of the agreement as one of the attachments, it says. So we're the recipient, where did it go? This lost it. Recip now, basically it's out of discretion as I just said, oh yeah. We'll be able to check out an e-bike for a certain length of time designated by the recipient, so we, let's.
Like I say, I went with that first, and I, Will and I looked at it and I was just concerned about the three week thing. James, do you have a concern? Like I said, there's two ways.
Kind of like Chris mentioned, it's more of like the opportunity of the three weeks is so the, the user can immerse themselves. And potentially omit their vehicle as an easy way with how small, you know, the downtown corridor is. So that, that was, I guess, the original discussion over the last six or eight months that we've had meetings. With the repair side of things, kind of the repair, you know, not to get into the weeds of it, but like the idea was like consumer would have it for three weeks. It would potentially be in for repair with, you know, we turn around give or take so it could go back out. So it's kind of a monthly rotation. Very understood that it limits a lot of folks. The more use. Even if it's less than three weeks, if it's a week or two days, very likely it has to go in for a checkover. Because you never know what that person did with the bike, right? So at what point, I guess, and that's kind of what, whatever follows the duration of use will depict the repair schedule, I guess.
What kind of repair sister, repair rotation do they have, the ones that Susie's talking about on the streets?
I don't know that answer. There are, there are, like, there's, it's a business that just literally follows those things. I've not gotten into the.
I think, I think we're checking that out because I, I almost guarantee they're not checking those out after a review.
Sure, I would say the bikes are probably very different. They're industrial for that type of use where these are more consumer type use. You know, a question for manufacturer track is the brand. Oftentimes when you put a bike into a fleet like this, it avoids warranty just because it's not your traditional day-to-day use. So. You know, my, I've, I've rented bikes. My insurance company has always told me after, I forget if it's one or two weeks. Ultimately, you need to get your hands on it, do a due diligence before it goes back out, even if it's the same user. So I guess, you know, those are the level of details that need to be kind of finalized to make sure we're doing correct checks and balances in that.
What's your thought? Just, I'm sorry, John, what's your thought on this deal?
I think that this is a pilot program. We can make adjustments if we need to. If we want to start off with one week checkouts, I'm fine with that. And we'll figure out a schedule with James for.
Okay, and I'm sorry, John, that you've been in.
The, the document that like governs the interaction between the, the public and then the library isn't before you. So this is just the grant agreement with ODOT to get the money for this. The, we need to still put together the waiver, liability waiver and all the rules about how to check it out and how to get repaired. And so that stuff is not before you today. This is just a grant agreement.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay.
Three weeks kind of, and as far as like when you're talking like, like in Washington DC, they just, you ride the bike and then you just throw it down. I mean, I mean, it's.
They were all over the site. Laying down all kinds of.
I mean, they're just thrown down. I at least was polite, put mine in a rack, but it's kind of brutal up here as a city.
Do we need to look at a more industrial unit?
We get what we get, don't we?
I think so. At this point, we have three nice e-bikes selected. This grant agreement ends on December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-seven. It's fairly short window here. It is a unique program and I think it would give our patrons, you know, just an extra shot of joy. And a chance to learn about a different mode of transportation. Just get out there on a nice sunny day, you know, this late fall or spring or summer.
Sorry to interrupt. There's no pictures, but they're, they're cargo bikes, so they're meant to haul kids, groceries, briefcases, suitcases, you know, backpacks, et cetera. So, I mean, they can be used. You could take them up the Crooked River, but one of them has a very large cargo. You can literally fit two small children.
Really?
So the idea was for families, right? Not this grab it for an hour to get from point A to point B. It's like, let's use this bicycle to see how, you know, I don't have the opportunities. So let me see what.
If it's a different.
This tool can do for us and our family, given this period of time.
How do we handle, so a conflict of interest, I bought a bike from James and James made sure that I had a helmet to protect my brain. He was very good to me. So how do we handle the helmet situation? That's, that's a question that I have there. How do we, because obviously I know that the one that you sold me, James, has like the little. You know, it's adjustable, but is, is that gonna work for us or how does that work also?
This grant covers helmets, extra supplies, extra batteries, all kinds of things.
So we'll kind of have a vast little array of helmets that could cover from a child to, like I'm saying, I know mine has that. Cord or whatever in it, so.
Whoever took that bike will get a helmet, well, it's some training and educational materials.
And then on the liability, we'll make that they need to, they need to wear the helmet, basically.
And then that'll be part of what Eric helps us develop.
Yeah, okay, perfect, perfect. Thank you. Thank you both very much. Okay.
All right, any more questions?
No, no.
So do we need a motion to move forward? I think it's also on the agenda.
Yeah, is this time sensitive at all? I mean, do we, can put this on consent for next week? You okay with that, Sarah? Thank you, James, for taking time and coming.
Yeah, thanks. All right, you're up.
Thank you, Chris and Sarah as well and James.
Yes, yes.
Legislative bill tracking.
Oh, Brianna, we gotta go get it. I was gonna bring. I was gonna bring.
Very sweet. So Susan asked for this to be on the agenda.
Oh, sure.
So I just added it to the agenda. So bill tracking system that the state of Oregon kind of pushes on government entities for tracking all of the legislative bills. There's two thousand nine hundred and eighty-four of them right now. Um, obviously, everybody knows that it's really hard to track. Will and I have had a conversation about this. Um, we don't have the capacity to track all of them and know when the hearings are and know if there's an amendment or whatever. So this is the best tracking system to use. We are considered a firm, so we pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars just for Cook County to have access to the bill tracker. And then what we do is we go in and add the users, the bill manager, and then our firm administrators. And then like, say, Katie has, you know, the modernization bill that we were talking about. We can assign those to the department heads that would want to know like when there's a hearing, if there's been an amendment, if there's been a change. And so this is like the best way to track it because it adds it, say, to Katie's calendar. This is when the hearing is. It would go to your Outlook calendar because we would assign those to, you know, natural resources or whoever it pertains to for that department. So Suzie asked this be added on to the agenda, not for the cost purposes, but to be transparent about how you as commissioners and Will and the department heads would be involved in tracking those. We do pay a monthly fee based on how many we're tracking. But we would only be charged for those tracking months for legislative session. We wouldn't be paying that every month for the whole year. It's just while the legislative session's going.
What is the per bill? Do you know that?
So like the breakdown that they provided me was, like, if you track up to fifty bills, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. Fifty-one to a hundred and fifty bills is two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So it's kind of bracketed how many. We're not going to track all three thousand bills.
How do you know?
We may, and if we do, we just pay a flat fee for unlimited, which is six hundred dollars a month, just for that legislative session. It wouldn't be for the whole year. So it's just something that you had asked to be put on the agenda so that people were aware that this is how you guys as commissioners and county manager would be, you know, helping the department heads know all the changes that are happening because changes are happening daily. So this is just kind of an informative.
And and just for an example, one of the letters I'm bringing up, the commissioner report, is how they want to make it that unless you have a communicable disease and you spit on the sheriff, then you can spit on the sheriff. It doesn't count. Who, first of all, who thinks of this? And second of all, who brought this even forward and why are we? But I mean, these are the kind of bills that, how are we even going to know? Thank God Kerry saw this, saw the wrong in this, because spitting is what you should have learned at two years old not to do. And brought it forward and we're going to sign, obviously, that we don't think this is okay. But there's so many of these bills that we don't know about and we rely on department heads to come forward with them. And I have a thing on my desk right now from AOC of all these bills, but to go through them, it's so mind consuming. And then how does the different departments feel about it? Because healthcare, like, I don't know how Katie feels about it, so this is a way to kind of link it in. And even if I do see something that Katie didn't notice, now I can link her in and say, do we need to worry about this? I don't know.
And it's really nice because the awesome bill tracker, you can upload, you know, kind of like OLS in a way. You can upload your own testimony or like, say, Katie had this bill and she got letters of support from veterans, you know? Maybe fifty of them wrote letters. She could upload those. Or, you know, she could upload them. She can't go in and like change how we track them or whatever, but she could like upload things because it would be assigned to her, you know? So it is a convenience, too, for department heads to also see those changes and how they can manage uploading those, that testimony and stuff, too.
It's amazing, I think.
That's my favorite part about it is that you can lead different people on to it so that they can follow it and they may be able to help us get the information that we may need to testify or vice versa throughout the process.
And I did the demo on Friday. I went through it with Michelle. It was about forty-five minutes. And then she went ahead and kind of created the account for me so I could at least go in and make sure that it works the way that she had shown me how it did to break up all of our departments and add those department heads. You know, because once you go in, say, this bill thirty-four nineteen on the water, you know, metering or whatever. I could go in and assign that to somebody and I wanted to see how it would work, like if it would give me the updates and stuff. And, you know, I talked to Brian about it on Friday, too, after I got done doing the demo. But I just think it's a really good way for you guys to to know where you're at on all of them because it's too hard for one person to be able to track everything.
And it's also the department heads. I think it's, I think it's just, it's just something we need to do.
I mean, it goes farther than just the department heads. I mean, it gives us the opportunity to see whatever bills are coming out or affecting the public. That don't necessarily affect the department heads.
Yeah, and there could be a public person out there and then we could link them in also. It just, it kind of puts the power to us. And again, and on these bills, another thing to take consideration is if they do have a hearing, you still have forty-eight hours after the hearing of that bill to submit written testimony and things. So just because you get on there and it's been heard, doesn't mean you still can't put in.
And that also goes to your calendar, that forty-eight hours, like, if there was something assigned to Katie, or I'm just using you for an example. It would, it would go ahead and add to her calendar that that's her forty-eight hour deadline to submit. You know, so it, it does do a really good job of keeping us on point for those deadlines.
Yeah.
I, it, it does still require folks to keep their ear to the ground, whether it's AOC, OLS, and and notify us of any bill that you're concerned about. So it doesn't, it does still require us being on top of what's going on so that we can start to track it. So it it's just part of, it's it's an important tool in our, in our efforts to try and track what's going on. It'll make it much more efficient.
A little easier.
As much as you.
Yeah.
What's, what's the example of gathering testimony? Um, I'm wondering if that puts department heads potentially in a position where, um, you know, we can't filter through them and only put the ones that align with, right? We couldn't just put letters of support if there's a letter that opposes. You know, we are opening it up to say, hey, public provide testimony and we'll get it uploaded for you. We, I feel like that puts.
No, we let that, we'll let them do that. We don't need, we, we, what you would do is give us the information and then the county would make a decision on what position to take to promote or, uh, come out against it, is my understanding.
I was just saying, for an example, like, you can do that publicly on your own right now anyways. But for us as a county, that would be a good tool.
But again, I, I think she makes a valid point. Let's say two thirds of them say, I love this. I want to spit on the sheriff. And a third say, I don't want to spit. I think that you still have an obligation to provide that, in my opinion. And then we come across as Cook County with our position, but I still feel that the individuals still have that right to be heard. Uh, in my opinion, because this is, it's transparent.
They can go and submit testimony on their own, not through this program.
Well, is it as, or as an individual, but again, they still, but then we come back and make an opinion of our own there.
Yeah, but I I think it's, it should be used more as helping us to understand.
To make a decision.
Concerns and decisions, which it's not, it's not a straw poll to decide how the county.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with.
Would, but you don't want to, you don't want them not to be able to be heard, though, is my opinion.
But so it sounds like there's a way to solve that. I think Katie is exactly right. If what the county is doing is saying to members of the public, give us your stuff and we will upload it for you. Katie's right, we can't pick and choose. But if, if, as Seth says, the letters are not sold to the public as give us your letters and we will upload them, it is give us your letters so we can be informed, you, or you. Then, based on that, the county uploads its own letter. I think that's fine.
But they already can do that and they already do do that. I don't, this shouldn't change that process whatsoever. It should just help us.
I just don't want people to not feel that they don't have that right.
Well, and and you can upload stuff through OLS, like there's, there's other processes. I don't, I don't think the county should take on the responsibility.
It's a tool for us to understand and follow the system. We don't need, yeah, I think that's, that can be.
Yeah, we absolutely encourage people who are submitting letters to share them with us if they think it's relevant to whatever position you guys make. But I don't think, I don't think, I would be hesitant to take on any responsibility for uploading anything to the public.
And then maybe we need a little blurb that goes back to them. This is how you upload it to the state. Maybe that's what we need.
I, I don't know why the public would need to be part of the, the, what we're talking about.
This would just be your employees.
This would be us and the county department heads sharing information to ensure that.
We're doing the right position.
Well, just that we know or are aware of what's happening. I don't think it's, it's about taking a position. It's about sharing information.
Is, is there, uh, not to be just a total dirt, but is, is, does that start getting into, uh, um, uh, what are they called? Serial meeting or chain meeting or whatever? If we all three are looking at it and bringing in information and.
I don't think if it's an automatically generated email from Bill Tracker, that's, that's a meeting issue. If you guys start communicating about it.
Yeah, I just think we need to watch that. We're not, we're not having discussions through the system on what is good and what isn't good.
Which you can't really do that anyways.
It would be the same as researching. You take something and you research it, you read, and then we come up with an opinion. Wouldn't that be the same as it's a research of taking that material, reading it, and I form an opinion? And as long as I don't share it and we do a vote, then then if we shared it, then it becomes serial. But if we don't, if I just use it to form my opinion, it isn't serial, right?
I mean, you guys, yeah, no, exactly. So if you guys are, you guys might end up following different bills, for example. But even if you're all following the same bill, you get, hey, there's going to be a hearing about this. Let's talk about this at the next work session to see if um, somebody wants to testify or if we collectively want to write a line of support. I don't think getting those updates on bills is any sort of meeting, um, it's the, these sort of communication around there where that would be. Um, we just want to make sure that happens.
Just like we might, make sure we're sure about that.
So I have a process question.
Oh, dear.
That ties in all this. So I, I say I'm tracking some bills, water bills, fire bills, other kind of stuff. Um, do I have the authority to submit testimony under the guise of Cook County believes? Um, I recently discovered that in the Shute County, they're the best model, but it sounds like every Friday morning they have a legislative commission meeting where they discuss bills that are coming up and then, and how is the county going? What position is the county going to take on any particular bill with its attachments? So if I'm tracking something, how do I know if? Yeah, do I, in a time of matter, because we got this forty-eight hour, we have the hearing and then the forty-eight hour. So how do we effectively participate in the legislative process with the need to, I'm assuming, clear a process that says, hey, here's an issue, this is what I think should be the position. How does that position get written and submitted as testimony in a, within that time? Where you guys aren't meeting every day to sort of discuss all of this stuff.
Well, uh, the forty-eight hours is after the hearing closes, so there's lead up to that. So that normally you have time. So I would, I would encourage, if you have, if you want to submit something on behalf of the county, I think it's really important that you get to a work session to talk about it, make sure.
Some of these hearings are going to start getting scheduled really more than every other week, so I, but yeah.
I asked that question also, so I, I agree with Tim because it is. And the other day we submitted something that we each submitted it individually because we had to, because we couldn't meet the thing. I, I agree with you that it really gets.
It can get long, particularly if the session's going to go on.
Yes.
A lot of these hearings are being scheduled, not with like two weeks notice, much less notice.
But, but I, I think I would, you know, if there's some, if there's a, if there's a bill out there that is a big deal and you don't know when a hearing is going to be scheduled, there's an opportunity like now to have a conversation and say, hey, I think the county's position should be X, Y, and Z, and then you're ready to go whenever that hearing comes up. I think that's the best.
It's just really tough, Tim.
Yeah. Well, like that water bill, the metering bill, it was a cut and dump. Within, I mean, it had a bill notice that didn't have anything to do with water bill, metering. And, and then suddenly the content got changed within about a forty-eight hour of the hearing and.
Yeah.
So that was, that.
So I don't, I don't know if you, I got an update. I was in Salem yesterday and talked to Representative Grayson. And she believes that it's done.
Yeah, well, fortunately, that one probably is done. I know you guys submitted guys done, but you submitted testimony like on the fertilizer bill.
Yeah.
You know, that one's not done. Um, there's the whole fire groups of bills that are coming that, you know, how are we going to charge landowners and or create, you know, bottle bill? Uh, take your incentive check, all these methodologies for funding, you know, the fire stuff. That's going to be an evolving thing as time goes on. I just. Um, again, I didn't know if you guys were thinking, because I think it's great. In my almost thirty-some odd years attached to the county, this is the first time I really remember you guys aggressively participating in, you know, the stuff. And I think that's fantastic. Now it's kind of like, okay, so how do we as department heads effectively, if we can, communicate so that that stuff.
And we're learning, we're learning. We're going to make mistakes, but we're going to get it right. But I think Bill Tracker is a really good way for us to start. Like I said, we're starting.
Yeah.
And I think it's a really good way because like if you look at my desk on the AOC thing of all the different things, it's just overwhelming. And which one catches your eye? And, and the other thing that's really hard is what catches my eye? Obviously fertilizer, obviously the water meters, that catches my eye. But then what catches, and again, Katie, I'm really sorry, but you're here, but what catches Katie's eye? It's totally a different comprehension or whatever, and that's why this bill tracker is so important because it's what catches all of our different eyes, which when it's brought forward, it may be super important, but it didn't catch my passion or my particular eye. And so that's what I think really makes this super valuable to the county. So I'm really excited that we found it. I think we can really use it.
So the process sounds like as soon as we know, we get the word to you guys.
And how it all works out, we're going to work it out, but I think it's the start. I think it's a start of, of getting better at what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
And we're going to have a few tough times, but we'll figure it out.
I have a question. Casey here.
Hey, Casey.
Uh, so, uh, is public comment that's downloaded into OLS going to show up in this program or do we have to go to two different spots?
Oh, that's a good question.
Brianna, that's, that's you.
So the, like, you mean public testimony?
Yes.
Comment, so the public would actually still use OLS. This is just for us. So if the commissioners do a letter of support for, say, I'm just using bill thirty-four nineteen because it's that water metering that we looked it up. Um, then it would be easy for the commissioners to just upload their letter of support. And then if we want to send it to our representatives, we can. Um, but essentially, the public is still going to use OLS on their own for their own individual use. This is just for us.
Commissioners couldn't see the public comment or that's in OLS. We'd have, like I said.
They already show what public comment has already happened?
Yes.
In OLS, will that, will that bring over to our systems so you can go through and you can see what OLS has already updated?
They update it every single day. It gets updated by who works for Bill Tracker that's inputting that information. So yes, everything from OLS goes to Bill Tracker. The only advantage to Bill Tracker is we don't have to go to OLS and look up every single bill for when the hearings are or if there's an amendment. We get a notification on that specific bill if there, if it's been scheduled for hearing or if there's been an amendment today, amendment tomorrow. So everything from OLS will still be on Bill Tracker for us to use. But it's just, you don't have to go to OLS and type in each bill. It automatically, it's just going to notify you if it's assigned to you.
Did you understand, Casey? It reflects OLS bill.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just, it's cumbersome to have to go. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just, it's cumbersome to have to go to two different systems. So I was just.
Since we're talking about, uh, legislation, just real quickly, something I learned, um, uh, in Salem last week and commissioners, you may be aware of this, but if. If there's a priority bill for the county or for the commissioners, um, there is some real added value to being there in person to testify and not to testify online. They make it really easy to testify. Online now, but if you go in person, because we have to travel so many miles, you get priority, a priority slot to testify early. If it's a big bill with a lot of testimony, there's a chance if you're online, you won't get to testify. Um. But I also learned that from time to time, a legislator will hear something that, um. In your testimony that they want to follow up with you on, so they will pull you aside after the hearing to discuss it more. So that was a recommendation from AOC that. It's priority bills important to the county that, um, you, you attend in person to testify if it's practical.
But I don't know. Essentially, I guess it could go to consent agenda. It's just that it's. It's a hundred and twenty five dollars for us to create the account, which like I said, she created it for me so I can play with it. If we decided that you guys didn't want to do it, she would just deactivate the account that she's created for us. And I know that it's a hundred and twenty five dollars. Will could approve it. It's, I get it, but it was an informative thing that you had asked.
I think that, I mean, I guess, uh, we, if we need to make a motion, I authorize Will to. To spend a hundred and twenty five dollars for us to put this immediately into action. I just think it's a necessary part of our business.
Good. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I think we need a motion.
Yeah. I'm just saying, I just think that we need to do it.
Yeah, I think, I think there's.
However, it works.
I'd be interested to see our.
We just need to move forward as a county and do this. And yes, we're going to have some. Clings and whatever, but we're going to figure them out. And I think it's going to make us better and it's a way to move forward into the future.
No, I appreciate Brianna finding this. Maybe it was Suzie, but I appreciate you guys finding it. I think it's going to be helpful, helpful tool for us.
Yeah.
Very good job. Thank you, Brianna, very much.
Randy.
Poor Randy. He's been sitting here all this time, huh?
Where else do I get educated on all the other happening?
Well, how do we know there might be a bill that you're going to be interested in? Well, there we go.
You want to keep track of them on that software.
Fire stuff.
Well, everyone, thank you. So normal presentation, as you guys can see, our numbers for permits are, I mean, they're relatively almost identical to what they were last year, this time of year. I mean. You're talking within six permits from January this year to last year and total for the year, you know, you're within twenty some permits. So. Again, I think, um. Get into that here in a minute, but. So, um, dwellings, almost two hundred houses are still overseeing under construction right now. Seven hundred, almost eight hundred other residential permits. A little over two hundred commercial. Um. So, you know, twelve hundred permits, active projects that we're actively inspecting, plan reviewing. And you guys can see that fiscal year comparison, we are starting to pretty much level out to what a normal. Community of our size and my, in my rough opinion. Outside of the large data center projects and big large go projects, you know, this is type of activity that, you know, we is overseeing the city and the county. We're kind of getting back into some maybe a little more routine, routine, normal numbers. Um, you know, our inspection activity, you know, we did, usually we're running about thousand to fifteen hundred, depending on, you know, the larger projects. We're just below a thousand inspections a month. So that's daily site visits. The guys are making job sites to inspect. Um, you guys can see some of the larger projects we got going. Doing also, you know, the dental office remodel over here behind Chase Bank that's going on. So with that said, we're kind of back down to some normal inspection, uh, rating level activity that we're normal. So just kind of keep you guys apprised of some of your staffing. That we're doing there at, at, at community development is that we have, uh, customer and budget cycle. So. We've had, uh, our primary plans examiner for residential, he went to the shoots county. Um, so we're, we're absorbing that additional workload on the residential side in-house currently. We also had a permit tech that went to City of Redmond. So Katrina side and permit tech sides are down in position as well. We've also chosen Rich Evans went from, he was our fire life safety, A level plans examiner and, uh. Was electrical A level. So that's a pretty, you know, that's a large position. Um, he's chosen to. Come out of full-time employment and go to on-call. So we're still retaining him. We've talked to him. We're going to keep him for. We've got him budgeted in for part-time work for the next year. So what we're trying to do is with the budget, we're down four, we're down three inspectors and a plans examiner. From what, you know, some of the upper levels of what the larger projects. So we're choosing not to fill those this year, just so you guys know how to come out and as we're doing budgets. So. Those positions were needed with the heavy activity, but now we're kind of getting down to some normal numbers. Um. Luckily for us, a lot of those were timed with retirement. So obviously, you know, that worked out very well for us. And the rest of our inspectors or examiners that are still of the older age, they still want to come and be part of the team. So that's, that's been a benefit as well. So. But the, some of the things I've noticed in the activity of construction over the last couple of years is that commercial, regardless of the larger projects. Commercial is always, is, is kind of been staying steady, which to me, that's a good sign. Residential is still kind of low, but with commercial, it comes with a layer of a lot of semitals. So. It would be with commercial, you know, hey, we want to do our building, but we want to defer fire alarm. We want to defer a business system suppression. So it takes a lot of additional, uh, met tech set, met tech time because they're separate applications. Like you get an application for a house, it's a one day. But with a commercial project, you know, you could add like twelve different semitals, twelve different reviews, plus you got your revisions, your RFI. So. You know, with that. Our staff's staying busy because of the level of commercial, because it's offsetting not as much residential. So. Just so you guys know what we decided to do is we're trying not, uh, we went ahead and removed the, the plans examiner full-time position also from the budget for this next fiscal year. What we're going to attempt to do is reclassify or re. Rich is going to take on the primary residential because what I don't want is a part-time employee or non-call employee. Helping manage the larger commercial projects because they're not there every day. So we're going to, James Bennett is going to take on more of the plans examiner inspector roles. Rich is going to kind of transition to more of the residential plans, see if that can be managed. And then we're also going to have a couple of other staff members as backup residential plans. So we're going to attempt to try this, um, just that way, you know, budget and it's, you know, committing levels. Um. So if, if we have a need and activity comes, we get another large subdivision, we get another large project that comes out of the blue, which typically happens is. You know, we're always the first one to have to staff up because we, they ask for a permit, we got to give them and they, they got to start building. Sometimes it's a reactive moment for us to try to find that staff member to fulfill that additional workload. So it may be that, you know, next fiscal year sometime, if, if activity does pick up quite a bit. We may have to come back to kind of regain some of those positions we're choosing not to fill this year. But just some information on you guys, so you know what we're doing on the staffing level side as well as our, what we're trying to balance.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
I think you've done a very good job of balancing your staff.
Thank you.
I know it's challenging, but I think you've done a good job.
Thank you.
For the commissioners, I echo what you're saying, right? He's doing a great job, um, with that side of things and trying to forecast. It's hard, but. And I'm sure we keep an eye on the budget and are able to serve the public. Um. On the planning side of things, things are actually pretty, are up. Um. Applications, we got thirty one last month. That's, uh, sixty one percent increase year over year, twenty percent, um, year to date for fiscal year. Plans that is very busy are, are planning permission calendars booked through the NMA. Um, we have things coming to you guys, uh. I think three, three different things coming to you guys in the next couple of months. Um. Uh, we're in the middle of the TSP. We are at the end of the TSP. We're, we're getting started on the, on the safety action plan. We are in the middle of the, the DOD military grant overlay and energy code change. And we're, um, having a work session on that tonight. So, uh, there's also, uh, the, um, the Haas substation is going in over, um, by the BPA substation. Seth and I went and. To a new sun on there. I don't know what you call that. It wasn't a groundbreaking, but it was a.
Victory lap?
It was a victory lap. Um, but it was really impressive and I, I was. Even I was unaware like what, what the implications are for that substation coming in as far as, um, generation and load capacity and what that's going to mean for the county and, and even for the West Coast. And so. Um, that's going to be a big deal the next couple of years moving forward, next year too, actually. Um. On the city side, um. We have the Crooked River Tap House, uh, applied for, um. Application and that's over on Second Street. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that is it's right as you, that first turns you coming into town. Um, I think they're going to have three food trucks and, and quite a lot of seating along the river. It looks like, um. Be a pretty cool addition to the town. There is also, uh, an expansion happening of the, um, veterinary clinic also on second, um. It's going to be expanding as well.
The white, the old white house, the one we're talking about? It's the old.
Yeah.
Crooked tails.
Yeah, yeah, but it's going to be white house and then.
Tail.
Tail. Well, whatever it is, but yeah, it, it's no, okay.
They're taking the house next door. They're going to add, um, handicap parking and parking spaces there and expand the facility.
Okay.
Moving forward.
Tap House going again?
Bangies. Yeah, the hangies. It's, it's right.
We're in that lot there and stuff.
Yeah.
So they, actually they may be flooded today, but okay. I wondered why that was all going in. So that's going to be food trucks and stuff there.
Yeah.
Perfect. All right. Interested. I'm not sure if it's flooded this morning, but it was, but yeah.
I think that, I think it's kind of the higher bank.
Yeah, it is. Well, the vault course is now flooded like, uh, the tenth tee and all of that. And it's Love Lake is now making a rebound going around the other way, but that's beside the point. Sorry, John.
It's okay.
A little sideline, but I was trying to figure out where could I go to, to the tap house, but not very far now.
You could, you could kayak down to it.
Well, not today. I don't think I've been cut that. I think I bypassed it quickly.
You could take that E bike from the library.
For three weeks, for three weeks, Randy, I could just go back and hurt.
You might get a buoy with that bike in the middle of the.
Hopefully the sheriff doesn't patrol. Oh, that's funny. Okay. Sorry, John.
It's okay. It was, uh, coming back. On-site is also up. Um, we had sixteen applicants or applications in a month. And so it's up thirty three percent year over year, fifteen percent on the fiscal year. Um, code compliance numbers for January are, um. Pretty mellow. I think, uh, we'll probably see a spike for next month's, um, numbers, but. Uh, overall, we're trucking along. I said, things are up. And so I don't know if that's if people are just, you know, tired of waiting or, or not, but, um. Banking staff is very, very busy and we're cranking away. A lot of, uh, pre-application meetings coming as well. And so a lot of activity happening. And I'm obviously have the experience, you know, um, relative over, you know, many years, but it's been very, very busy. Um. Other news, uh, I think I want to share with everybody is we are doing a new conference room down there in the courthouse on the, on the first floor. That's the old law library. Uh, I want to make sure that, um, we think facilities, James and the staff have been great. They cleared the room out. They painted it. We put it in like the long conference room table. IT has been amazing. They're putting an owl in there. So it's going to be consistent with, um, meeting room in here and the meeting room over in the annex. And so. Uh, we have a third space now. People need to hold a meeting. Um, I think it's the best one personally, but, uh, so I think we're on getting things set up so you can reserve it. Um, but it's open to everybody. What's that? How many will it hold? What's that table hold? Five, it's ten.
Tennis tight.
Tennis tight, but, um. More than we've had, so. See, I'm excited about having that there. So you got a professional space to me that's not, uh, in my office. So. That's our update. Any questions?
Eric, thank you, John.
Thank you. Um, managing the tutorial. Um, just a, just a quick note. I, I'm going to really focus my manager report and our, on our regular board meetings. I'm just going to kind of start to use the work session as a, as appropriate. Um, opportunity to update you on things. I did just want to note. Uh, last week, Commissioner Omri and I spent a couple of days in Salem and, uh, I thought it was really informative. I learned quite a bit. We covered topics like, uh. Assessment and taxation, um, community development, uh, risk management. There were some good topics. So. Um, that county college is going to continue for another, we have three year.
Two more, two more, April and in June. And I'm pretty sure there's thirty seven. So we're one of the larger classes they've had. And I'm pretty sure Will and I are going to be co-valedictors.
That's, that's, that's good to continue the, um, history that I was, um, I'm going to come on to.
I'm sure we're going to go to, I'm sure we're getting a gold stash.
But I don't even like coffee.
I just wanted to throw that out there so you all could be jealous of us.
Yeah, but, uh, I thought it, I thought it was good. I got some nuggets that, um. I will incorporate in the, my daily practice as county manager. I'm sure Suzie did as well. So.
Actually, when you go to the bar after the classes, that's when we learn the really good stuff about the other counties. That's what I've noticed. And it's not the first drink, but the second drink, you really get some good stuff. So.
For the record, I wasn't invited to that.
Hopefully it was better. He wasn't invited, but anyway, so I learned that we both, I think we both learned a lot.
Yeah.
They, and they fed us. It seemed like every time we turned around that we had to eat, which was a burden. I think after about the fourth meal, but oh, um. Bird we were up to.
Hey, Commissioner update.
I have a letter in front of us for opposition to House Bill twenty six forty. Which is on behalf of Kirk County residents, we express our serious opposition. The bill introduces a challenging requirement for prosecution. The state must not only prove that an individual intentionally spat at a law enforcement officer. But also that the act posed a risk of transmitting a communicable disease. This change severely undermining some protections currently afforded to our law enforcement community. So complicating the legal process and potentially allowing offenders to escape penalties. Which obviously I don't feel anyone should spit on everyone or anyone should spit on anyone. And so I think it's ridiculous that you'd have to prove that you had a communicable disease or the person that spat on you. So I would ask. That I would like to make a motion that we sign this letter in opposition to H bill twenty six forty.
Uh, yeah, I totally am, Morgan.
Yep, so am I.
Is it something we need to sign today or?
Yeah, and it's right here in the.
And make a motion that we, uh, send a letter of opposition against House Bill six forty, six point six forty.
And I second it. I'm sorry.
Post has been made second to support, uh, letter of opposition to House Bill twenty six forty. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, aye.
Oh, Herman, aye, sorry.
Barney, aye.
I'm a one, I'll say I'm going to do that. Yeah, and I totally forgot. Okay.
Um, I, uh, had a good day yesterday in Salem where there was another rally for the map. Uh, we had a bunch of the legislators speak. Uh, they think that we're on track. We need to keep the feet to the fire, the Democrats, even some of the Democrats are starting to join the fight, which is really exciting. I think two of the representatives from the shoots county are starting to pow on, which is exciting. Uh, I've been having really good conversations with John about coming up with. A way for us to appeal for the entire county. Not just our county property, but all county residents. And if they don't want to pursue it, they don't have to, but at least if they didn't hear about it and it gets to a point. Through the appeal process, um, that they, they didn't get in, then that will give them some security. Uh, and then John and I are going to help share that with some of the other counties throughout the state and hopefully like we did with our letter. Get, get quite a few of these things going. Uh, I think the more the appeals, the better, because if we know anything about the state of Oregon, it's kind of lazy. And so the more work they have to do, the more likely they are to be. Willing to change their, their opinion. So.
No, I think that's a good idea. I reviewed that letter too, asking for kind of a blank, uh, or a little coverage. Uh, in the county, I think it's, we can do that lately and it's great.
Yeah.
And I, I'm totally in agreement with that. I think that would be a super good move on our part. So, yeah.
And then I'm going to Washington DC on Friday and I've, uh, got some meetings set up with. Some of the staff from the speaker's house to have some pretty.
Some of the staff from the Speaker's House to have some pretty in-depth conversations about secure rural schools. And trying to find some ways to get.
Money.
Some money for the fact that they won't let us cut trees. And I think. Uh, part of that conversation is. Uh, let's have a conversation about how we can fix this so we can actually make money off the forest. Versus just getting checks, but you can't just cut us off day one. So I I think we really need to continue. To fight to be able to use our natural resources, but the way that we've been set up, we can't just. Go cold turkey and. You know, it's it's just too much federal land in in our counties to not, or maybe they need to pay taxes on it. I don't know.
No, and we also, the other thing is, is we're setting ourselves up for more wildfire because we have severe disease with fine beetle. And sudden fur death and drought trees. And we all have an entire vertical matchstick system out there. And right now, there's an economical value that could be driven. We could get, that they could go out there and it would be economical. And we would not let our yards. Look like that. We would go out and trim them. So why are we doing this and setting up an apocalypse like happened in LA?
Hundred percent, yeah.
It's not just the SRS or whatever.
Also, uh, I'm working on getting some meetings with FEMA about the floodplain.
Yes, we need this.
We, well, we need it gone. And then there's a few others that I've talked with other departments. Will sent out an email to get information from me, a bunch of department heads, so. I've got quite a few different. Wish lists that I've sent to our Congressman's Office. To try and get in front of the right people to explain to them what their decisions mean for us.
We need a farm bill to.
Yeah.
This is kind of off the, off this, but I'll go back to my, I got a call when I was at AOC and obviously everyone knows that we've had that wolf. That was over in Brothers that caused deprivation. He's collared and he moved over to Lakeview and he's not scared of humans. Which was just a matter of an apex killer not being scared of us. And so the commissioners over there crafted a letter. That was to the governor to help them in getting deprivation. So long story short. That's just something.
Let's let's look into that.
Yeah.
Because I think there's some information coming out soon that.
But that's just something. I don't know how they did it, but just something that I had gotten and it's just an interesting, an interesting development in that sort of. I guess.
So I have a last week, they tested after the Core Three in the Shute County there by the airport. I have a letter trying to be assigned as a local official, but as among the Core Three Executive Council. And this supports the testimony that I'm going to do. Also, the twelfth and thirteenth, I believe. I'm going to Denver, Colorado. It's over and back to two or three different facilities that. Get an idea of what's what's the plan is for the one here in our regional area.
Which I think is a really good idea. Because let's face it, disasters seem to be coming closer rather than farther.
They do, and we need to be ready, so we're. So I have. Anything else? Well, I think that. Can adjourn.
There is not.
So we are done.